Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Mayor Jerry Cook. Today, we're talking about both the December 3rd and the December 17th City Council meetings. Thanks for joining us today.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
We did it. We made it to our final meeting of the year.
And yeah, you kind of thought it was going to be a short meeting, but it wasn't. It was 28 items long and we got through it.
Yeah, our last meetings of the year are tending to be long lately.
There was a lot on there.
Long agendas.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get the street reconstruction in there early so that you can get your bids out early. And so there's just a lot of strategizing going on.
All right. Well, we got it done and accomplished and we'll start off talking about our last meeting of the year, which was December 17. One of the first items we wanted to talk about there was accepting donations for the 2019 Movies in the Park, which there were two this year.
Yeah, so we had several representatives from the Community Strength Foundation there, and they presented a check for $3,900, $3,700 to cover the Movies in the Park. One is normally in the spring and one is normally in the fall. And the earlier one got rained out, so we ended up with two in September. But they're always received great and the folks really appreciate them. And we appreciate all the work that the Community Strength Foundation does. They work with the, they receive money from the North Star Lions. But the Lions, the Lions share, the biggest chunk of what they receive comes from the Twin Cities Gateway Visitors Bureau and then some gambling proceeds money.
All right. Well, I imagine we can look for those again next year.
I would think so.
All right.
Yeah.
Moving along.
I got nothing else.
That's okay.
But it was interesting because it's a lot of horsepower on that Community Strength Foundation.
Yeah.
I mean, you're looking out there and you're looking, and I think there's a, there's a fire chief, there's a former mayor, there's, you know, the Scott who's the, you know, one of the officers at National Little League or Cardinal Little League. And so, and the chair of our Arts Commission and lots of, lots of, lots of horsepower on that commission.
Yeah, a lot of people volunteering and giving their time to the community.
Yep.
All right. Council approved a Class A on sale, Sunday and 2:00 AM liquor license. This is for a new business coming to town?
Yep. Anytime you wander onto any of the social media sites around town, which I don't recommend actually.
Never know what you're gonna get.
You never know what you're gonna get. There's some really good people that for some reason when they get on social media, become confused.
That's social media in general though.
Yeah, it is. It's like, I just, I have to just go to any one of our agendas and you can actually get the right information on that.
Right, right.
No, so setting that aside, it's an old location on Coon Rapids Boulevard. I mean, literally it was built as Mr. Steak and became Arnold's and became Jay Kuzno's, later Grumpy's and then Willie's. And now it's called Leonard's. And they're, we approved their liquor license, subject to they've got some more hoops to jump through with the county and with some license, with some insurance and things. But I, but I'm excited to see us one step closer to reopening. And it's a great location and I don't really know, the last operation that was there was there for a long time and I think it was successful. I don't know what happened near the end there. And I just wish them all the best and it'll be nice to have something on the boulevard there again.
All right. I know people in those groups will be happy about seeing something in that space.
It won't, it won't stop. It won't stop though.
All right, moving along. We had a public hearing on vacations of right-of-way utility and sanitary sewer easements. This is for Port River Walk. That sounds kind of boring in general, but just kind of wanted to get an update on where things are with Port River Walk.
Yep, and to exasperate the boringness of it, we've been looking at it multiple times. And a lot of it is, Excel Energy is still using some of those areas. So Excel isn't quick to sign off because they have to move their utilities or bury the utilities. And it's really cleaning up the final plat down there at Port River Walk, the old Coon Rapids Shopping Center area. So center homes can really, so we can close on the sale with center homes and they can start getting basements in the ground and getting homes there. We're still optimistic that we can get it closed on January 31st. We were able to sign off, I think, on three of the vacations and I think we still have four more that we're, like I say, hopeful to get done in January.
Okay. But, so stay tuned on that. But in any case, hopefully ground will be broken this spring and those homes will be going in.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, there's been a lot of groundbreaking down there for everything else, but yeah, no basements yet.
All right. Well, soon, hopefully. Moving along, council approved recommendations for the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation Board of Directors, as well as receive the annual report. Speaking of power, there's quite a bit on this committee as well.
There is. Former council members, former mayor, commissioner.
Former city attorney.
Yep, yep, former, yep, former police or former fire chief.
So there you go.
So, I think, maybe not. I think I have my commissions mixed up here. At any rate, so this is the group that oversees the funds that the city has in their Mortgage Assistance Foundation. And I believe there's still about $6 million in that fund. And the purpose of the, the purpose of the group is to facilitate housing updates, to refresh our housing stock in town and to not just, not just send the money away, but to try and have it a bit of a revolving fund. And to that end, they created a new program last year called the Front Door Program. This is, this is the entity that's overseeing our Home for Generations, Home for Generations 2, you know, a litany of other programs. But the new one that they came up with was Front Door and it's for exterior improvements. And it was wildly popular. They started with $100,000 and they ended up with, I thought it was like 50 grants and it was gone immediately. So they reallocated another $150,000 and then did a drawing. The bottom line was it's all for exterior improvements, so things that your neighbors see, things that people see when they're driving down the street. And they ended up with 73 folks that went through the process. It was about $185,000 investment from the organization, but it netted over a million dollars in home improvements. That's huge because that has a ripple effect. You know, you can become kind of complacent in your home and then all of a sudden you look across the street and you go, hey, look what they did. That looks really nice over there. And then you see that little sign out front, Front Door. Well, I wonder what that is. So it has a way of rippling out and that's really what we're hoping to. So to encourage them, we received their recommendation and we made a motion to transfer another million dollars into, for them to use for the programs and things. And so it's exciting.
Yeah, so there are, and just there is that program. There are several others as well. Folks can get more information on the city's website, coonrapidsmn.gov. It explains all the different programs. And like you said, there was a lot of excitement. I was there the night they did the drawing. It was just, you know, everybody was excited to hear if they got their money or not. And even some of those folks, it sounds like if they even didn't get the money, they looked at what other options were available and did some of those programs.
Right. I mean, you know, you put it in the city newsletter, it's on the website, but until it becomes relevant to you, you're not aware of the stuff. And this kind of woke people up and they're going, oh my gosh, well, I didn't even know about all these other programs. So that's really what it's all about. It's really getting people energized and excited to fix their homes up.
Yeah, I think a lot of people think there's also income restrictions on everything. Some of them don't have income restrictions.
Right.
You know, so check into what is available.
Yeah, and I, and I think that was because originally a lot of the programs had income restrictions, value of home restrictions, and they were very restrictive. And, and now there are still some of those in place, but they're not terribly restrictive. And so we encourage people to look into it because, you know, it's, it just, it helps you, it helps the neighbors, it helps the city.
Yeah, so yeah, check your newsletter too. I believe it's coming out in January. There'll be more information there and also in the spring.
Right.
All right, moving along. Council adopted a couple of resolutions ordering a public hearing, an assessment hearing. This is for street reconstruction for 2020. Seems like we just completed the street reconstruction and now we're on to next year's street reconstruction.
And in some cases, we haven't even quite finished this year's, but those aren't our projects. Those are the county projects. So yeah, so we've been, this Coon Rapids is very aggressive in trying to keep their streets in good condition. And I've loved this. It's, this predates any of us here. Councils here have been very deliberate and staff have been very deliberate about making sure we keep up with our maintenance on our, on our lines, on our streets, on everything. And to that end, we've been aggressive over like 10 miles, 10 miles a year. And now we've finally caught up. So this year, we have two projects. One is 2.6 miles of local streets and it's 16 different street segments around town. And then the other project is 2.1 miles of Minnesota State 8 highways. And that project has .2 miles of local streets and that's five street segments. And this includes, you know, a couple of bigger sections. The one that most people will see will be the, the street up by the Riverdale Crossing Shopping Center that wraps around the Cub and the Walmart up there. You know, we, when we first, this was, should have been done a year or two ago, but we were hoping to be able to kind of reconstruct the intersection there. And the street engineers recommended a roundabout and everybody was on board. But it would have required us to do, to exercise eminent domain and that would have added too much to the project. So without the participation of the owners, they wanted it, they just didn't want to deal with all their leases. So we just couldn't justify the extra money. So it's basically going to be reconstructed the way it is, but it'll be much, much improved because those streets are in tough shape.
Yeah, definitely. And yeah, there was talk for a while, unfortunately.
Yeah.
That's not happening because that is a busy area up there and hard getting in and out.
And it's the funniest thing. I mean, the, the business owners want it, the owner of the development wants it, but for some reason he doesn't want to go through or they don't want to go through and modify all their leases to allow for the extra land required for that roundabout. And suggested that we do it through eminent domain. Well, that would have added almost a million dollars to the project. It's like, no, that's not going to happen. So.
Well, at least it'll be reconstructed. Those roads will be a little smoother and there you go.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be good.
All right. And another one, council considered a joint powers agreement with the city of Blaine. This is for the reconstruction of University Avenue.
Right, a segment that most people won't even see being redone because it literally impacts from Main Street to in front of the high school to Bengal Drive, I think it's called, which is basically the Blaine High School parking lot.
Okay.
You know, but it, but it goes, it's half Coon Rapids Street and it will impact the townhomes that are right there. So, which are, and the townhomes are all Coon Rapids residents.
Okay, so that is being done as well. So anyone impacted by a street reconstruction, they will be notified or they've already been notified, I imagine.
Correct.
They'll be able to come to the assessment hearings if they want to and understand what's going on with those projects.
Yeah, and there's, there's already been, I think, at least one open house and there will be at least one or two more. January, I believe, will be the next one. And they're really important because you want to know, when they're redoing the street in front of your house, you want to know the contacts, you want to know where to look for your information because you don't want to come home and be surprised that, oh, I can't get into my driveway today. Or, oh, look, we don't have water today. Yeah, so I mean, they, it gets posted, but you want to know exactly how it's posted so you're aware of it and you don't miss it.
Yeah, all right. Council adopted a resolution accepting a donation of real property from Shamrock Development.
Yeah, so Shamrock was one of our bigger developers in town and they just had all these little orphaned properties they needed to clean up. There were, in a couple, a couple of cases, they're, they look like regular city lots on a cul-de-sac. That's how they plat out. But they're not buildable, because they're too low or there, there's something else going on. Well, so they're of no value to them. And so just to clean up their books, they just donated them all to the city of Coon Rapids. And then we'll figure out if, you know, how best to use them. In most cases, they are, they're connected to parkland or other open space and it'll just be absorbed like that. In some cases, they might, there might be some work with residents, but I'm not sure how they're gonna, that was not decided now.
All right, but you're not going to turn down donated property?
Nope. Well, I mean, there might be a case where you would.
Yeah.
But these aren't like abandoned gas stations or something.
We've checked, we've checked these ones. Okay, that's good to know. All right, moving along. Council adopted a resolution formally adopting the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This is something that takes a lot of time and energy.
Well, yeah, I mean, the process started five years ago and our staff has so much time into this. And the, and the staff and the council and our commissions, they all work on it. They get as much public input as they can, our neighborhood meetings in the park, spot on the website, all these areas, trying to get the public's input on what's our city going to look like in 2040. And you have to work off of some parameters that the Met Council provides. Here's where we think your population's going to be. Here's what we think's going to be going on in the region. And so it's a very comprehensive plan and it's a very large project. And it's just really nice to have it behind us. So we thought what we had conformed to the Met Council guidelines. Everybody signed off on it. It went to them. They made a couple just small technical changes and then it came back to us for final adoption. So now we're done. And there's just this, okay, good. Now we can move on.
As I said, then what's next? The 2060 Plan?
Probably, and I imagine they'll start that in what, 2035 or something, but.
I was thinking about this because I think back in the 90s, we had meetings about like the 2020 Vision Plan like for here. And I'm like, 2020's here.
Here we are.
You know, it seemed like so far away at the time, but time does go fast.
Well, yeah, and you look at their, like their population models and you go, how are we going to have that many more people here since we're really fairly well-built out already? But you just, you go, okay, all right, we'll, we'll work with that and you move along.
Yeah, all right. Well, got that done for now. I'm sure the Community Development Department is happy to have that behind them.
Yeah, I think that's a big sigh of relief for them because that's the, the major part of this project is under Community Development Director and that department.
All right. Moving along, council adopted a resolution establishing Bunker Hills Golf Course fees and charges for the new year. Wanted to talk about this because there's something exciting up there, new this year for senior patrons.
It really is. I mean, often when you're, when you're looking at your pricing changes at the end of the year for the following year, you're looking at all these little slight increases or more big increases. And in this case, what they recognized this year was they were missing a competitive advantage midday. They said, our pricing isn't competitive midday. So they went through and they changed the pricing model on their, from 11 to 4 on the regulation course, which, I mean, that's a beautiful course. They reduced all of the fees from like $10 to, you know, for the senior patrons, down to like $18 to do 18 holes of golf. I mean, that was like a $20 drop, I think. So it's, they think it's really going to position them to really make best use of that golf course midday. And, you know, it's all about getting golfers out there and the experience.
Yeah, so yeah, this is senior patrons, but it's also regular patron cardholders and the public.
Everybody saw some discount.
From 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, it looks like, on the regulation course.
Correct.
All right, make sure we dotted all our i's and crossed our t's.
That's right.
A little Mr. Anderson upset with us.
Yeah, well, and then, and then when you go up there at 11 to golf for those midday rates, make sure you watch where you park because all of the parking places near Kendall's say Kendall's and that's for lunch.
Yeah.
So please, you're already going to be walking 18 holes. Feel free to walk another couple of blocks and park out in the.
Yeah, it is challenging, but I know the restaurants were having some issues with that. So they've kind of beefed up the parking for them.
Right, right. Yeah, there's, there's nothing more frustrating than watching somebody park close to the restaurant at noon and they get their golf clubs out. And you go, okay, that's another customer, but that's a different type of customer and you are impeding the use of the restaurant patrons.
Yeah.
You know, so you have to, you don't want to upset anybody, but at the same time, you have to try and encourage the lunch business.
Yeah, everyone wants to park as close as possible, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's people at the gym that want like, wait to get the front row spot instead of walking.
You're going to go carry your clubs for 18 holes and you don't want to walk one extra block. You're, wait a minute.
I get it. It's just human nature. So yeah, that's exciting. We'll see, hopefully they'll pick up in use up there during the midday hours.
Yeah, but I digress. 11 to 4, big golfer discounts, excitement, yes.
That is cool. All right. That is all we had from our last meeting of the year. Want to go back to our first meeting that happened on December 3rd. Not a lot to talk about there, but we did have one big item, that being the resolutions adopting the 2020 budget and tax levy.
Right. That's another big project that starts April, you know, and all the staff starts talking about what their needs are going to be for the year. And it's up to the city manager and the finance director to work with them and to work with all the department heads. And then, and now more recently, they've, they've brought the council in earlier to kind of talk about those needs rather than having, you know, the city manager have to make all those hard decisions early. So it's a very involved process. And then the first formal look at the budget becomes in August at a workshop. And then we, because in September, we have to adopt the not to exceed amount that's going to go to the county, the tax levy. And then finally in December, we adopt and finalize the budget for the following year. And it's 300 and, I think it's 308 pages or something. It's all on the city's website. They put together a great, about a four or six-page budget and brief that gives you all the, the changes and the priorities. And it really, it represents the priorities and the, the objectives, the goals of council and staff for the city for next year. And you'll see in there again, it's maintaining, it's always, you know, keeping our infrastructure up, public safety. And it's, there's not a lot of fluff in there. I mean, you're really trying to stay with what, what the needs are and to keep a very vital community that people want to live in.
Yeah, and there was a change this year. There was a discussion about public safety and increased call volumes there. So there was some added positions for police and fire.
Yeah, it's the first time in over 10 years we've added any fire or any police staff. And we added two because the, the number of calls has gone up so high. Not because, not because of a higher level of crime. Actually, crime is the lowest since the 1960s. But the sheer volume of calls. You know, if you remember when you were a kid, if there was an incident that happened at the neighborhood, you had to go back home, pick up your landline and call the police. So there would be maybe one, maybe two calls on an incident. Well, now everybody's got a phone in their pocket. Everybody calls in everything plus what maybe didn't used to rise to the level of a 911 call is getting a 911 call now. And so it's just, somebody has to, somebody has to respond. And it's just spreading our police department too thin. It's, you know, it's, it's hard for, hard for people to actually take their days off. It's hard for people to go home at the end of their shift. You know, it's just, we need to make our police department a better environment to work and hopefully two officers will take care of that. And then, and then we expanded the fire, fire department by one call. And again, that's, that's really a, it's, it really comes from the number of calls. You know, our fire, our fire crew responds to medical calls, fire calls, which, you know, thankfully aren't that many fire calls anymore, but they respond to medical calls. And if there's any incidents out on Highway 10 or out on the boulevard where safety requires that traffic be blocked, we'll often send a fire truck there because we don't have anything bigger and brighter and more visible than a fire truck.
Right.
So we, they have a lot of functions in town.
All right. So the overall property tax levy, I believe if I recall correctly is.
Oh, that's what we were talking about, right?
Just under 5%. I was trying to find the number, but I think it was just under 5%. The average homeowner on a $230,000 house would see about a $60 increase to the city portion of their property tax.
Yeah.
But again, values are all over the place. Everyone gets their tax statement. They should have received by now their proposed tax statement for next year.
Absolutely.
Check that over. We always get into this discussion about people's values because the budget is not the time to contest your value. That comes up here in the spring. So if you don't like your value and you think that it should be different, get a hold of the assessor's office here at City Hall and they will talk to you about it.
Right.
And go from there.
Everybody, everybody pays a share of that based on estate formula. And some people, some folks, you know, with higher value homes, I don't know how we're doing on time, but some folks with higher value homes, they don't see a big, they're already paying a very large tax burden, but they're not seeing a big increase when the budget goes up a little bit. Because entry homes saw such an increase in value that their, their property taxes went up more. So it's, everybody's paying their share. It's just that some homes see a larger increase than others based on how their values went up.
Yeah, see, it's really hard to explain.
It is, it is.
It's confusing to folks, I know. All right, we do have just about five minutes left. We should go move into our resolution establishing polling locations for 2020. We're not sure how much of these are actually changes, but just wanted to inform folks that, you know, obviously 2020 is an election year and people will be heading to the polls.
Yeah, absolutely. And they'll be heading earlier this year because instead of the caucus system, they'll be doing the presidential primary and all of the voting will be going on at their voting places. So make sure that they pay attention to where they're voting, just in case it got changed.
Yeah, and again, that's the first Tuesday in March because we have our council meeting one day delayed for that. And that is new this year for folks that it's good, the polls are going to be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. People will actually go in and vote for their preferential choice for president.
Right.
Based on party.
Yep, yeah, and that's, that's a change also because now they have to go in and I don't know exactly what the process will look like, but they'll have to declare which party, which party's primary they're participating in.
Yeah.
It won't be the same ballot. It used to be the same ballot and you just picked one side.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so that's new this year for 2020, so watch for that. Wanted to talk about Boulevard Plaza, possible site expansion there. There was some information just released on the city's website in the last week about that. You guys have been having discussions about this for many months now.
Yeah, and I, and I really encourage folks to get out there and look at the, look at the website, participate, offer your, offer your suggestions. You know, the Boulevard Plaza, which, you know, the first building there is the ICE Center, was, was built to be Phase 1. And, you know, and now we've got the, the beautiful park and the splash pad there and it's, it's turned into an incredible area for hosting community events. But in this, in our city, we don't have a facility large enough to host any indoor events. You know, we used to have the annual Green Expo. It was, it was an amazing event. We ran out of space. We don't have space to host it anymore. So we don't host it. We don't have it anymore. The Northwest Remodeling Show is up in Andover because we don't have a spot here to host it. And so, and we need court space. We need indoor walking space. You know, we have a, we have an agent community that needs indoor walking space. We have young families coming in that need interior space for their kids in the winter and on clement days. We just, we need to seriously consider this. We're, we're becoming an outlier as far as a community that doesn't have a community center in any way, shape or fashion.
All right, so if you go to the city's website, you can find this information. They kind of leave, lay out what is being proposed, when the council will vote, why they're looking for the expansion and how you can participate and give your feedback. So.
Right.
Check that out.
Yeah, because that's it. We absolutely don't want to get ahead of the residents. You know, we want their feedback. We want their input. And yeah, we don't want to spend money unless they want to spend it.
All right. Time for our favorite topic. Moving on to Hanson Boulevard. We understand that that's going to maybe reopen this weekend.
Oh, we, by the time somebody's watching this, hopefully you'll be able to drive over that bridge on Hanson Boulevard at the tracks.
Yeah, Friday at noon, December 20th is what we're sort of being told now.
Yeah.
Before Christmas. That's been a long project for folks. Been closed since this spring, so it'll be nice to be back open. It will be one lane in each direction throughout the winter. And they will come back in the spring to do the finishing work.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, it, more than 13,000 cars a day were, used to use it. And, and they used to meet about 75 trains a day there. So it's going to be so nice to be able to go over the top. And even as, even one lane each way, it's just going to be wonderful to have it open again.
All right. Also, there's still talk about a third lane expansion on Highway 10. Is that correct?
Third lane on Highway 10. It's been the perennial discussion. And Anoka County at their November board meeting committed $644,000 to Phase 1 engineering and layout of the plan, basically to try and get a shovel-ready project to present to the legislature. Then we're going to be looking for about $25 million in funding for the state.
Okay.
If you feel strongly about it, write your legislators, you know, and let them know that you think this is important. And it's, we're looking at adding a third lane from Hanson, where the third lane ends now, through Main Street up to Round Lake Boulevard. And the, the strategy is, or the overlying theory is, that's really all the farther it has to go because enough cars get off at Main Street and Round Lake Boulevard that two lanes are fine then going through Anoka.
Okay.
fine then going through Anoka. You know, there was originally talk about going to 7th Avenue. You know, maybe that'll come back at some point. But at this point, my understanding is that Round Lake Boulevard should alleviate the pressure.
All right. That has been to bring us to the end of today's show. We are out of time.
Sounds good.
Thanks for being here.
Yep. Wish everybody a happy holidays and, and get ready for a strong 2020.
Yeah, 2020 is here. All right. Thanks for watching. We'll see you back here again after our two meetings in January.